Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 19th School Board Meeting, 1 o'clock School Board Meeting order. I'd ask that everybody please rise for a moment of silence and a national anthem. Thank you. The National Anthem. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the first seen in the air, they proved through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. Vote call.
Will Ferrell present?
Kristi Chong present.
Sally Hunt.
Cheryl Messero.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, special announcements for the board. I received this notification at 4:30 Sunday evening, and it is a request from Ms. Conklin. She said, "I need to let you know I'll not be able to attend our workshop and meeting on the 19th. I had an unexpected trip come up. I'd like to request the development of our legislative platform being pulled until our next workshop. In addition, I'd like the attorney's contract to be tabled for the next board meeting if the board still wants to take action after the workshop." Let's see. I know it will be discussed during that time. However, if a vote on the contract is going to take place, I'd like to ask for consideration so I can be part of the discussion. I apologize for short notice." So that's from Ms. Conklin. And I didn't know, I thought maybe she would be able to call in this evening, but apparently not, from what I understand. So I don't know where she is. I don't know what happened. So, we have that. Okay, we're on to the board liaisons.
Okay, so, not a lot to add, but I did attend both the Veltar Elementary and Old Kings SAC and PTO meetings. Was very encouraged by the parent participation and seeing that that is up from last year. It seemed like a lot of the parents were eager to take on roles within the organization, and they have some great plans this year for fundraising and to help supplement some of the needs in our schools. And was not able to attend Indian Trails because it conflicted with one of our meetings, so that's all I have to report today.
I've spent a lot of time at Benell Elementary in the past few months. Attended the parent meeting there, which had a huge attendance at that time, and I mentioned a little bit about it before, a lot of good conversation and just a time for parents to be heard. Some other things that were discussed. Benell Elementary applied for and was awarded funds through the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant, which will help with supplies, funds, early literacy coach and pre-BPK. Also the addition of many paraprofessionals, 3 and pre-K, 13 and K-5, to provide additional intensive small group instruction daily. And K-2 teachers participating in letters training to improve reading instruction, and also help with purchasing additional reading supplies and materials for all classrooms. For the Parent and Family Engagement Plan highlights, there will be monthly Family Night events, which includes a trunk or treat, Family Music Night, Bingo for Books, Family Movement Night. Some training for development of staff, collaboration with other programs such as our Early Learning Coalition, Title III Supporting Students for Whom English Is Their Second Language, and Title IV Provides Resources for Families in Transition. And for Buddy Taylor, I'll have to get over there, but the next SAC meeting will be October 26th at 5:00 p.m. That's it.
And I don't have any updates today. I'm scheduling meetings, and we'll have updates at our next liaison update.
Okay, let's see. Matanzas High School SAC met. They held their first meeting, and the two was well-attended, which is always good to see. Much of the meeting was introduction of what SAC does and their responsibilities. Principal Bozeman explained their first, what they call the freshman frenzy, which is a day just set aside for the freshmen to get acquainted with the building and activities and things like that, and was a huge success. So I guess we're gonna hear more about the freshman frenzy from years ago. The new construction has created some traffic situations for students to navigate inside the building and how to get to different buildings, so they are working on resolving those. And so far, the new cellphone policy seems to be working extremely well in the classrooms. That was something a lot of parents have been thinking about and concerned about, but it seems to be doing well. Watchworth Elementary School SAC met. Principal Nguyenfeld held her first SAC PTO meeting on September 7th. The meeting kicked off by explaining Tier One school responsibilities to a crowd of 30 parents, which I felt was really good to see. A great deal of time was used explaining the school improvement plans, the highlights last year of the scores and setting goals for students and staff to achieve in math/ESE education, as well as creating a strong positive culture for the students. And the meeting was concluded with the election of new SAC officers. Flagler Tobacco Prevention Partnership. They wanted me to stress that 25% of all the students surveyed in Florida have tried smoking, whether it be tobacco, it could be through vaping, and it's again starting to creep up. So what their plan, one of their plans is to offer free continuing education credits. This one here is for teachers. Teachers can take that course and get, I believe it's 30 continuing credit course points. They have another one that is just for school nurses, so that's another big plus, and they can get 20 continuing credits, which is good. And then the last one is a free course for students who want to learn more about tobacco use and its issues. So I have these. Anybody's interested, they can come take a look at them. Focus on Flagler Youth Coalition. The biggest thing about the meeting at Focus on Flagler Youth Coalition is a new provider in the area called MIP. And what it stands for is Meet in Progress. And hopefully, I'm trying to connect there, it's by Easter Seals and supported by Flagler Cares. And what it is, it's basically another type of a youth center after school, but if these kids have any issues or time, they're gonna provide transportation, and it'll be open from like 2 to 6. Brand-new building right, it's just north of Vertigo, over on Route 1, and you'll see MIP, and it's Meet in Progress. And it's gonna help with mental health issues, that's what it's all about. So it's, I have all the information and flyers and what they're trying to do, and I think this is a good way for a lot of school kids to find another place, something to do after school that's safe and it's gonna be monitorable. So that is good. Okay. What else? Flagler Attorney and Governance Board. Good news, show tickets are finally on sale for individual shows, and they're selling like hotcakes. So that's a plus. They'll be making money, a lot of money. They have some great shows coming out. I highly recommend if any of you want to see some, take a look at what it is. I myself got a season ticket this year, and I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of them. They have one show in particular, it's Whitney Houston, and she's, this performer is only doing it once in Florida this year, and it's in the auditorium, the Fitz. The rest of it is throughout the rest of the country, and then she'll be back to perform at other theaters in Florida next year. So might be worth getting a ticket for. Okay, what else did they do? The Fitz Opening Night Palm Coast Arts and Education Supplies Annual Grant and Local Programs. They apply through Palm Coast, and they used to have a $50,000 budget, Palm Coast did, for this grant. They now dropped that to $20,000. So I would think anybody that had received money in the past, and I'm sure the Fitz will get some money in the Governance Board, it's gonna be less. And that's just the way things are financially with the city. CAR for Governance Board, although I'm not their representative, they did meet, and I was involved in that meeting, because it had a great deal to do with the new inter-local agreement that is being prepared and written between the county and the school district. And the biggest deal right now is the fact that the county would like to include POW in that arrangement. And a lot of people like the idea, and a lot of people don't like the idea. So it was quite a conversation that was had, and we're still waiting to see the updates as the inter-local agreement gets written and what the school district's role is going to be in that agreement. So that's still in progress. And that's the liaison report. Okay. Going now to 3.0, three on yours, 3.01 Agenda Change Changes and Adjustments? Anybody?
I do have one. I do to ask that we pull 10.01, which is the Legislative Platform, until the October 3rd meeting.
Okay, so, under 10, 10.01 Legislative Platform. Since our legislative person is not here today, I don't know, is any of you prepared to speak on that? Because I'm not.
No, let's go ahead.
So let's go ahead, and we'll pull that, and we'll put it to October 3rd.
And I'll be sending out some of the suggestions that we have come, we have thought of as a district, as well as some of the suggestions of other organizations that we are a part of, as well as some ideas for us to consider.
Okay.
And we'll have that for the October 3rd meeting.
Okay. That's very good. No others at this point?
I do not have any.
All right, so then we're gonna go down now to Public Comment, 401. Does anybody have any public comment? Has anybody signed in?
There is nobody signed in at this time.
Anybody wish to have public comment? No, we're good. So, we're going down to Academic Services. Mr. Stefanski, 6.01 School Improvement Plans.
Captain Missero, LaShaka Moore, Board Members. Each year, the schools create a school-wide improvement plan to address areas that they see that they can improve on, to increase student success or staff and faculty success. And for this part, we are, again, aligning it to our strategic plan. So when you visited the school advisory councils and they talked about the school improvement plans, you should notice that they kind of mention or go with elements of the strategic plan, such as caption kits hearts for the resilience and well-being, or core academics, or professional learning committees, communities in those aspects to work together to try and, one, do the needs assessment to find areas that they can improve on, two, set a goal that is attainable, and then, three, implement the strategies that they've identified as a school to try and achieve that improvement they want. So, sort of statutes require the school board to approve those plans for the current status our schools are in.
Okay. Any questions? So then we'll still have our individual schools making their presentations in a timely matter.
Yeah, so when we come back from winter break sometime in probably February, we'll have the mid-year review. So schools will go back, reflect on the progress they've attained from when they implemented the plan to that mid-year point, and then report back to you through that like five-minute spotlight of the highlights of what they've done and where they're going.
And they'll have the fast results too.
We'll have PM 1 and PM 2 give us a project, a progress monitoring check.
Excellent. Okay, anybody else? We good?
Yeah, good.
All right, thank you, sir. 6.02 Career Pathways Articulation Agreement Presenter, Mr. Blair and Mr. Reeves.
And I'd to ask that Ms. Kirkland also.
Ms. Kirkland.
Yes. This item was an item from our last meeting that Dr. Conklin did ask that we bring back. And so this item is being brought back to your attention for review, as well as to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Messero, Board Members, LaShaka Moore. Just wanna go or kind of recap where we're at with the board. There were some questions regarding the articulation agreement, and so the agreement's been in place since 2020, and we've been doing this for the last few years. And it particularly aligns with our CTE programs at our campuses with Daytona State College. And we're gonna talk about how they align with our secondary program for that, and how our graduates can receive credits. And I'm gonna let Mr. Blair speak to that now. Do you have any questions specifically regarding that?
No, I think that Dr. Conklin's main purpose was to be certain that we, there's no duplication of services.
Correct, that is correct.
That was her point.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. There's no duplication.
Yeah.
And.
Had to avoid that.
And what we've done, and, yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Blair.
As, as programs are created for FTC that align with the programs that are secondary, programs at the high schools, then we will sunset anything that's available that would be a conflict. So we've been working with FTC to ensure that there is no duplication, and then again, as programs are grown, or rather are created, we make sure that those alignments are homegrown rather than sending students out.
Okay, so, but what brought the question up was that it appeared that there was. So was that, was it in fact not duplication, or was this sunsetted now because of that conversation?
It is not duplication.
Okay, so it just did not exist. It was just a misunderstanding of what, of the presentation.
Can I ask some clarity on that? And forgive me, I'm a little bit in a post-lunch fog, so if, my understanding, there was a conversation, I think at our last workshop, not that we were talking about high school, we were talking about, is it Daytona State or?
FTC.
That's a business regard.
So, okay, 'cause then you're talking about, so we are saying that there is, there are no duplications between Daytona State, is that, am I saying it right?
Correct.
And FTC. But, so what, I know there was at least one that Dr. Conklin felt was a duplication.
Health Sciences.
Okay.
So in Health Sciences, there are, I believe is what she was referring to for duplication.
Like nursing or something?
Because, yes, but we don't offer the LPM program, which is what those credits articulate into for Daytona State. We offer nursing assistant, phlebotomy, medical assisting, patient care technician, EMT.
Because it's a large profession.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Love that. Okay.
So that's why it might appear to be duplication, but because the program is different, even though it falls under the same category, it's not.
Different license and whatnot. Okay.
And so we work also with Daytona State, and Ms. Moore, myself, Ms. Poserdet were there earlier last year to kind of go over part of this information to make sure that there is no duplication. And so this year, we're adding into the agreement our law and justice, right, because we don't have that at FTC, but we've added it to Matanzas High School. And so this new articulation just adds law and justice to our agreement with Daytona State. So when students graduate from our high schools, they have the opportunity to pursue careers in those fields and earn either credits for their college credit for the high school courses, or clock hours, and it can be applied to their certification.
So while I've got Jeff here and we're on the subject, I'm curious, because I think we offer so many great things for our students on this kind of career pathway. Is that a relationship with a guidance counselor? Is there a catalog available? How do our Flagler County students know of all of the different opportunities available to them?
So at the high schools, there's points of contact for career and technical education. Along with Mr. Blair, who pushes in and provides support to the schools, there's career fairs, college and career fairs that are coming up, and there's a plethora of opportunities, along with our school counselors, who kind of help guide them through that opportunity. And it's great because our students can earn Gold Seal, or they earn free up to 60 credit hours of college, depending on how they're articulating through the process, articulating through it. And so there's a number of ways to communicate it, brochures, through website, push-ups through Twitter, Facebook.
Students attend the high schools, you know, kind of like a preview, ideal to show them.
And as we move through, that is an area that we have heard from families, that's an area that we can improve.
Awesome.
When we look at our strategic panel, and we talk about access to a high-quality education for all of our students, one of the things that I've been sharing with the team is that access cannot be passive, you know, so we have them that, where they live in these places. But when we look at especially what is being asked of us from the state, from the Department of Education, especially through the commissioner, is that we get to a place where we have a plan for every student. There is this opportunity for every student to sit with some significant person on the campus in order for them to select, with their family, select the paths that they want to go. And so in collabor, when we look at our career and technical education, I know that our foundation is going to be working with Mr. Blair and Ms. Kirkland on that, but really, it is an area that we can improve. Last year, we tackled dual enrollment, and so we hosted at each school dual enrollment nights where families could come. We brought in Daytona State. We also hosted one here at the district office. And so those types of things are things that you're going to see us doing as our students are leaving middle school, coming into our high schools, as well as working towards having the ability to have individual plans for every student, because that really is the direction that the commissioner has encouraged and really is commanding us to go in the direction of. Because there are lots of different opportunities that are available to our families that we find that they do not know about, you know, be it our ACE programs, or our IB programs, or dual enrollment, or some of the programs that we offer through CTE. So we have to do a better job of getting that information out to them. So that is an area that we.
We're not just reaching like families who are already engaged, or a part of communities that are already kind of in the know. So I love that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's definitely, and so as a board, if there are ideas and things that you have, and as you engage with, with families around things that we can do, please share that. The Daytona State night with the articulation, the dual enrollment that we did, that came directly from an ask of a, of a parent. And we were able to stand it up, and they felt it was extremely informative and helped them, and so we're gonna do that with other opportunities that we offer, especially in our secondary schools.
And I'm just gonna say one last thing, Jeff, I'm sorry. It was so great to have done, you know, you guys too, I think, participating in the different tours, and just to even see things at the middle level of the agriculture and the culinary. And so to me, like, that jazzes me up, of having a just recently turned 12-year-old, you know, what, not that they know at 12 what their whole life is gonna look like, but how is all of that connected? Because we already are starting at the middle, and do we bring elementary in on the fun? But, you know, so, to me, it's like, I just think you have the coolest job.
Oh, it's, I'm lucky.
So I'm glad, I'm glad to hear the focus that's on it.
And to your point, the Governor, also the commissioner as far as pushing down into middle schools, that's part of our initiative as well. And Mr. Blair and I have been talking this year about next year rolling out the opportunity for a high school-type course in the middle schools. It gives them that exposure, right, for that opportunity to explore. And with the advent of Zella, which is the platform that we're talking about, to give them that career, not that you're set in.
Right.
But you begin to think.
What do I like, what do I not like?
Yeah, and begin to explore that option. And as I told my boys, that the safety that's under you in school, right, you can try things and make mistakes whenever, and before you go out in the lunch in the world, that's the beautiful thing that we have for our students. So we are actually working towards pushing down into our middle schools as well.
And we have an opportunity, I mean, at the root of it, to save our families a lot of time and money.
Yes.
You know, with the programs that we offer within our schools, and so really helping our families to understand that there is not, you know, just a regular student, like, that really doesn't exist. We have so many different opportunities and options for our students, but making sure that they are aware of that. So you'll hear me talking about this active access, and not just some passive access because this information is, lives on our website, or if you engage directly with someone on the campus, they'll tell you about it. But how are we actively getting this information into the hands of our students and our families? So it's an area of improvement, it's definitely an area that we're gonna focus on this year.
That's great. I have one more thing, unless you guys go. Just on the topic, because we talk a lot about wanting our young people to, at least some of them, to come back to Flagler County, right? So I, and again, we don't discuss this right now, but I'd be so curious to find out how we engage Advent Health, Halifax, the Chamber of Commerce, the business community. So as we are talking with our students about the path, how do we, like, have jobs even just kind of like, what is, anyway, what is that partnership which is totally in alignment with community and everything?
Let me tell you, I'm excited about it.
Oh, the shot.
Because I literally just had this conversation, and I'm not gonna let the whole, I'm not gonna let it all out the back right now, because we gotta work through some logistics, but I just had a conversation with Ms. Rizzo on yesterday around opportunities that we can provide to our students that allow for them to engage with our local municipalities, with our local hospitals, and she just provided to me from the chamber information that we're gonna be looking at to ensure that the programs that we are providing within our school are things that are actually meeting the needs of our students. So we have some ideas that are coming that are going to be extremely, extremely exciting, extremely exciting. I don't know if there's something you want to add, Teresa, about some of the work that you guys are already doing with connecting our students to local agencies that they can, they can stay and work here, or come back and work here on.
Absolutely. So one thing, we have a grant with United Way, it's actually a $140,000 grant for over two years, it's $70,000 a year. And what they, what is a classroom for careers mentoring or coaching program. And so we are working really hard this year to get our local industries and businesses into our schools. We met with each faculty, we explained to them that this opportunity is there for them, if they need speakers for their classroom, if they need business leaders to come in and talk to students, we have that opportunity. Mary Johnson actually leads this from my office. But we have Future Fridays at each school, every other Friday, we rotate, and it's a business owner or organization that comes in and sets up during lunch, and students are able to come over and have a conversation with those business leaders to talk about what they provide. We really, our, our business community has voiced to me that they want more connection with our students. They need more employees, right? They want them workforce-ready, so we're working really hard to make that happen. We've got some plans coming up, and I don't want to reveal too much, but more to be talked about in the future.
It's a win-win.
Yes, it is awesome.
Absolutely.
On the post-secondary side, each, each program has an advisory committee that's made up of business community members that guide our programs and help make sure that we put out the talented pipeline that they want to hire, and they do hire from our programs. So that is for every single program that we have. So for our Health Sciences program, we do have somebody from Advent that comes. And then for our Electrical and HVAC Apprenticeship programs, same, we have multiple businesses. And they, they come in, they get to speak, they'll do demonstrations, that kind of thing. We try to stay well-connected.
The only thing I would add to this is that our Road to Success program has internships, and they've been developing a base of individuals throughout the county where their students can actually go and learn and be paid, which is quite unique, and that's something that we can really pride ourselves on. It's quite a good opportunity for our kids.
And those students are studying to earn their GED.
Yep.
Okay. Okay?
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
More to come.
Yeah, we're gonna hold that. All right, we're going to Operational Services portion of Share Agreement. Whiteview Multi-Family Apartment Complex. The W section.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Ms. Moore, Board. We have a new agreement here for multi-family apartment complex. It's at the corner of Whiteview Parkway and White Mill Drive. It's 316 apartments, and it's anticipated to generate 19 students. We have the report, and they're ready to go, and in fact, they've been pushing me to get this on the agenda, so here it is, and ready for any discussion. Uh, we have the report and they're ready to go and in fact, they've been pushing me to get this on the agenda, so uh, here it is and ready for any discussion you may have.
Anybody have anything they would like to add?
I mean, do we have any say in all these apartments going up?
No, ma'am.
Not really.
They they have rights, developers buy, you know, land and they have rights to develop it and as long as they follow the rules. And we work very closely with Palm Coast and I have to compliment the city on what a good job they're doing over there. Uh, given all the development they have coming at them, I think they're they're doing quite well.
Yeah, that's a, that's a city issue and county at times depending.
Yes.
I will ask though to this question. Um, to your knowledge, are any of these apartments going up, do they fall under the category of affordable? I um, uh, full disclosure, I recently, I, for this new benefit cycle, I added my family um, to health benefits. And it, by the time benefits are taken out of paychecks, I mean, there is like not a lot left over. Um, and I think about our new teachers especially, who are still at that lower band. In fact, what is it, like almost like first ten years, not with compression? Um, to your knowledge, are these going to be apartments that a a a new teacher could afford to live in? Because if that's the case, then I think as a school district, we are benefiting because they need to find a a place out of the rain.
Yes, ma'am, well, I think that's a a universal problem and unfortunately, this particular project is not. But um, I continue to communicate with the city and they're well aware of that need. And um, you know, maybe we have land available or something we could do to partner with them. I don't know if you wanna think out of the box, but there is a huge demand for affordable housing all over the the state.
No, and that's, I mean, that's something I would love for us to maybe champion. I I think a previous board member on a previous board brought up tiny homes. Can we work with the city to potentially san, what's my word? Not sanctioned, what's my word? Uh, to to allow for, because I know tiny home communities are not usually allowed uh, in a lot of communities. But that is something Superintendent Moore, honestly, like I think that is something that would be really great for us to give voice to if you're not already uh, with our community partners.
Yeah, if it's something that the board would like for us to look at, I know that um, I think it was just recently, Volusia County is looking at um, some things with affordable housing, so. I mean, it's a pleasure of the board.
Well, I mean, I wasn't planning on bringing this up and since you're, when you brought up apartment buildings that I go to uh, like an affordable housing, that usually people want a house.
Right.
Um, so I mean, do you guys have any interest?
What would be our role in that? Because I mean, do we even have any say?
I think we have a say in the sense of advocating.
Well, are you, are you saying something um, like um, that we would use our, some land that we own to um, to build? Whether on our own or with partnership to build homes, whether they be tiny or whether whatever size they might be, that would be, I don't really, affordable housing, I I think is maybe the wrong term. I think it's more workforce housing.
Love it.
Yes.
Because people think, you know, subsidized or things like that. But um, I would be open to to exploring that. I I don't know if I wanna put that on our plate at the moment, um, but it's definitely a conversation I'd be willing to have going forward. Um, there's a lot that goes into that. Um, and um, so I I would just tell you that I'd be interested in exploring that, but I don't know if I would say.
When would be, so first of all, thank you for the workforce housing, because you're right, there's a lot of thing can go into um, what you just said. So um, what in your opinion would be a good timeline? So if you think about, we've hired most of our teachers, I would think for this school year. So and Bob is in the room. When would it, I mean, knowing that you just, you can't put a community together overnight and and to answer your question, well, I don't know that I have the details. I just think LaShaka, excuse me, Superintendent Moore has a vested interest in in what housing is available. So it would just be interesting for us to either, whether it's we're we're an advocate or or we we look at options that we can do. I think I would be open to whatever that looks like.
One thing is we always wanna be able to attract the top talent for our organization. And housing is always going to be an issue in every municipality across the state, across the country, really. Um, and and I think we are gonna have to get creative and think outside the box when it comes to how we're gonna attract uh, that talent. Because let's say, cost of living is a major factor when taking any job in wherever you're going to. Um, so, but um, I would say that if if we were saying, when when should we revisit this? In my mind, is at the at the earliest, I would say maybe uh, at the beginning of the new year, to have a conversation, um, to see if there's some, if if, what ideas could could come about of that. But it it's gonna take more than just this board, I think it's gonna be more of a community conversation. Um, and, because this is more, I mean, we're talking about visioning at least three years at the minimum out into the future. Like this is a, you know, a future vision that has to be worked toward. Um, and I I don't know what that looks like right now. But uh, I think the idea and and the and um, the need is potentially there, right? So I think it's something that this board, if there was consensus, should should take up maybe in the future, but I don't know if that's something we wanna put on our plate right at the moment.
Can I, so this is, this is a request. Could we, you know, um, and just for clarity, uh, Superintendent Moore is still acting as interim. I think there's been a little bit of confusion that you are not, the contract is not done, right?
Absolutely.
Um, that you're still our interim and thank you for being that. Um, but i- is it a, I hear you, like I don't think as a board, we we need to actively take that on. But I would love for Superintendent Moore to have consensus from the board that she use her best judgment. That as she is in meetings or working with partners, that she has approval from the board. That she can engage in conversations that she deems appropriate around this topic, right? So I hear you, like we're maybe, we wouldn't maybe put it on an agenda for us until January, February, but could she at least have the direction that this is something we are interested in her having a conversation on?
I think that we're always welcome collaboration with the superintendent, um, you know, that that's part of our relationship. I I I, so yes, I I would say yes to your question there. Um, I just don't wanna set any expectations or get people's hopes up that this is something to look forward to. Uh, but I I, we do need to start thinking forward, uh, you know, beyond today. We need to be looking at the future, you know, three to five years out. We're also got, remember, we have schools that we may be building here, uh, but we're still deciding on what that's gonna look like. So I just think that takes kind of takes a precedence there. But that could be kind of a side conversation along with that, right? But uh, as far as in priority, um, I think it should be uh, something we look for forward to in the future. It seems like there's overall some general agreeance that we might wanna explore just to talk about it, right? But uh, right now, I just think there's some higher priorities that we have on our plate that we should be focused more on. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
I'm okay with conversation, but it would be, what does that look like? Like are we talking fifteen minute cities or the whole you'll own nothing and be happy? Like, I don't wanna Palm Coast to head in that direction.
Yeah, I am not looking for this to be, yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
Housing is an issue, so.
And I really think it's 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 a, it's a conversation with the county, with with the city, with the school district. We are partners in in this here, the workforce, we're, although we are the largest employer, the workforce is larger than just five or schools. So we have to get uh, stakeholder input and to see what that might look like, um, and where the true benefits, and what, and truly, will we see a return on an investment in this type of venture? So, you know, there's a lot of things to consider here, um, when it comes to providing housing for people and 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 how that, what that's gonna look like and the costs associated with it, the financing of it. Uh, I mean, there's there's just a lot, that's a, that's a, that's a heavy lift for a school district to take on. I'm not saying that we can't uh, be part of that conversation, but uh, I, my take is that let's table that till till the future. And I'd say at the very least, in the beginning of next year, it might be a time to at least have one workshop to have some general, and maybe invite some people in to to bring in some wisdom.
Can we say February? Can we just say right now?
I would say, let's let's say a tentative for February, right? Because we just don't, I don't know what the agenda's gonna look like in February, but I think February's a reasonable, uh, let's just kinda put like a tentative float that for February that we might just have a conversation about what this might look like.
And I think one of the things that um, we'll also need to pay attention to is um, as our, as the city of Palm Coast and um, the county of Flagler, as they're developing their legislative platforms. Some of this will be really, um, you know, potentially unveiled too of of ways that we can partner with our different municipalities. Um, that may, that may be something that comes up, you know, those, as those conversations are had around what the the future legislative platforms and ask are. Just reviewing and just reflecting on what the previous ask were from the years past. We know that there is growth and development here in Flagler County and and in Palm Coast. So our part of this right now, you know, may need to be being knowledgeable of what is really happening in our community right now. And ways that we can support um, the work that is currently being done. Um, and then maybe in February, we have a conversation around what workforce housing uh, really looks like. Or as um, Ms. Chong stated, like what is our our role and our part in that?
Yeah, I mean, we might wanna, we wanna stay in tune with what is coming down from Tallahassee because that, those conversations are coming uh, from there as well. And see what their priorities in in next year's session might look be, because then we can align our conversation with 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 some of that. And also, we gotta remember that the county um, is looking westerly, so there's gonna be a lot of conversation. And that component could be something part of that conversation as a larger um, collaborative discussion.
I think it needs to be.
Right. And and I I think there's appetite for that. I think that's part of the reason that it is going west is because Palm Coast, as we know it, is pretty much built out um, for larger scale communities. We we're mostly infill lots and you're never gonna find truly affordable or workforce type style homes on ten thousand square foot lots just because of what it takes to to, the cost to to construct it. But when you go out west and you have planned developments that are communities uh, with smaller lot lines, um, and things like that, it brings the cost of construction down. And I've I've heard conversations of of laxing some of our standards, as you mentioned, maybe not tiny home as it's been advertised on, you know, HGTV and all that.
Right.
But uh, maybe it's not the minimum of twelve hundred square feet, maybe it's a not a one car, it's not two car garage, they can have one car garage or carports. Things that bring down the cost of construction that can be passed on, truly passed on to the the buyer at the end, at the end of the day, so. Uh, so yeah, let's 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 just, I I guess if you wanna close out this conversation, then and move on, we'll we'll revisit this in in and around February. Um, sound good?
So it sounds like we have consensus that a tentative for February.
Well, I just, I just wanna comment. I, you know, I listen and it, and it, it's a good conversation. I'm not particularly sure it's a conversation for our school board at this time. We have a lot on our plate and I would hate to limit putting our resources in that area when we're still responsible for so much things. Like the new school buildings that are being built and the ones that are gonna have to be built, that concerns me. We don't have a big staff. I agree we need to partner, as Ms. Moore and Will was talking about. This is a conversation at the city level and the county level and we can be an active partner. How it's gonna affect the schools and how can we assist them? I don't wanna see, and and you will feel the price of all the others that we put our teams onto that, then what about the fifty thousand other things that we're supposed to be doing? That concerns me because our job is school board. Our job is to have schools ready to go and seats to put those little chicks in, you know, and they bring in these these groups, we have to be ready for them. They don't give us a, yes, you, yeah, you can have them or no, you can't. We're getting them. We don't know how many we're getting, but we're getting them and it's gonna keep coming, it's not going to end. Builds west, we gotta be ready for it. So I'd be very concerned about putting our professional resources into something like that when we have all these other things that we are trying to work out. And that would be my concern.
I'd agree with you, Chair Masara, that I don't, I don't wanna put the staff's resources into this conversation in February. I was, um, because Ms. Simeon said we wanted to put sort of a date toward, that this would be a conversation on what our future direction might look like, on how we engage this conversation with the community. Rather than saying, hey, we're gonna start building houses, uh, you know, but just saying, you know, how, by that time, there might be further discussion amongst the municipalities. We can, we'll we'll know a little bit more where they're going with it and how we might uh, engage. So I I agree, I don't wanna uh, bog down the resources of of our staff with with this.
And I wanna, I wanna add my name to that. I I, just to clarify, um, yeah, I think we brought up tiny homes just as like, uh, or smaller format homes. Um, I believe Superintendent Moore asked, do we as a board, you know, want her to even engage in these conversations? To me, this is a matter of maybe letting people who should know have visibility to what the average teacher salary is, what they have to pay in benefits. You know, I don't know if our community leaders are even aware um, of, as we're, you know, and Bob's, you know, knows this better than anybody. I mean, when we're trying to recruit, can they even live here? And I think in community partnership, it's just, if nothing else, um, sharing our side of the county. Um, and so when you talk, I mean, I, I was, when you brought up apartments, right? I I went, immediately I went to this place of, is this going to be twenty-five hundred dollars a month, right? Uh, you know, or is this gonna be eleven hundred dollars a month, right, or less? And so, um, it, that's just what kind of brought this on for me of, you know, as we build out west or whatever we do, we gots to have teachers. And so, uh, I agree with what Will is saying, that was not my intention for us in February to have, um, you know, Dave Freeman come to us with like blueprints of tiny homes. It's really just, I think, enabling, yeah.
I agree with you there.
Yeah, no, I I, and I'm sorry, and I'm sorry if I.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, I, I, I think LaShaka, this is just saying to you, this is something that I think as a board, we need to make sure we are, um, I talk a lot with community partners about us being an ecosystem. Uh, this is something that I would hope that you are engaging in those conversations with mindfulness of housing for ours.
Yeah.
And not just instructional staff, but also our non-instructional staff.
Let me just add that all the municipalities share the same challenge for their firefighters, their policemen, you know, all of their kind of. So there's a common ground there.
Yeah.
And what I was gonna maybe uh, speak with the superintendent and Mr. Freeman about was um, all the possible um, you know, programs that may be going on out there already that we may not even be aware of. There are partnerships that are probably being pursued by the other municipalities that hold these uh, problems in common. So I could gather that information and, you know, provide it to you and then we can pick and choose if there's anything that makes sense.
And I think it's a conversation we all can have when we have that opportunity to, not just Ms. Moore, but the rest of us can have it. When we have, we each have individuals and groups we speak with, when the opportunity presents itself, certainly something we all can discuss.
Right.
Anything else? We good?
Sorry, I know that went bigger than you were expecting, but I I appreciate, thank you.
It it, it's a, an important topic for sure, so.
All right. So we good on the proportion of share agreement? We are. All right, so ten oh one has been tabled.
Pulled.
Pulled. It's going to.
We will, I will bring it back to on ten three, yes.
Ten three, okay, so it's going to ten three. All right, so we're down to eleven and that is legislative, that was also pulled, that will go to ten three. And now we're on eleven oh two, attorney's contract review.
There we am.
Eleven oh one.
Eleven oh one.
We're on all of the policy changes.
Oh, the policy changes, yes.
Chair Masara, Board members.
Yep.
Interim Superintendent Moore. Um, you have before you a large group of policies that are being proposed for changes based upon this last legislative session. So I wanna take a moment to review those with you and um, discuss the changes that are being proposed. So the first one is um, to school board policy three oh six, which is the safe and secure schools. The primary area of what is being changed there surrounds uh, the threat assessment program. And that the threat assessment tool that was previously used is now called a threat management tool. Everything has been changed from assessment to management. Um, in addition to that, the way that we are conducting the threat management assessments are that there is going to be a district coordinator of the threat management at this time. It is Mr. Woolleyham. And he would also be the um, head of the district threat management committee when they are called to meet. And that committee would be called in to meet when there is a high profile matter that requires a. that requires another look at district level of the situation that happened at the school-based level. So then that takes us down to the District Threat Management Team that is at every school.
School-based, school-based threat.
The school, correct. And so as a result of that, every school now, the principal will name someone who will be the chair of the committee for that school-based team. There will also be a vice chair. And it sets forth how, based upon the type of threat that is found, how it gets reported to the parent when it is an unfounded threat versus when it is a substantiated threat. And how they will conduct those investigations and how long they have to conduct those investigations. And who is required to be a member of the Threat Management Teams. So all of that has been laid out in here in addition to actually having a separate section with respect to parental notification and how that parental notification is to be made and how they are to document when they make those reach outs to the parents regarding the fact that their child has potentially made a threat either to harm themselves or to others. The other significant thing is that when threat assessments were previously done, they were only done when the threats were being made against harming the school, harming an administrator of the school, or maybe harming a peer. That has changed. The Threat Management Tool is now also going to be used if they're threatening to harm themselves. And so it has broadened it a little bit more. It also has set forth more parameters and requirements regarding getting the mental health that might be needed when these situations arise. So all of 306 is really noting the changes which were a result of House Bill 543. And then the administrative rules that came out in 6A 1.0018 and 6A 1.0019. So that is 306. The next change is for instructional material selection. And that is our school board policy 410. And it sets forth the requirements of how many people have to be involved in the school level instruction appeals. It used to, we used to have it where it said citizens, but the administrative rule changes actually said it had to have parents of the school be a part of that committee. So that change has been made. It also discusses when those meetings are convened. It discusses the challenged material. And this is challenged material under Florida statute 1003.42 PRIN 2 and 1008.28, 2A. And 2A actually has to do with adopted instructional materials. And that's very important to note because when the rule change was being proposed in 1094126 and they were discussing library, that the library materials are included. Those library materials are library instructional materials that would be challenged under this policy change. So I want to make sure that you all are aware of that. Also contained in here is within the House Bill 1069. There is also language that afforded a parent, if they disagreed with the determination made, that they could file a, an appeal with the commissioner and then that would invite a D.O.E. proceeding. So that is contained in here as well. And finally, the last thing that is contained in here is regarding the parents. If they have made a challenge regarding instructional material and they are coming to this board to read that passage to this board. And if they are stopped in the reading of it, then it sets forth that that material must be pulled immediately and has to be discontinued from being used as an instructional material. So it is very specific to, again, we're talking about instructional materials. So those are the changes to instructional material selection. We then have a small change to educational media material selection, which has to do with the school board shall adopt and publish on its website the process for a parent to limit his or her students' access to materials in the school or classroom library. We were very progressive when we made our changes to the educational media material selection where we already were doing the parental responsibility of allowing them to log in and through the parent portal notify as to what they wanted their student to have access to. And if they wanted to limit the selection of books, how they could go about doing that. So we were already proactive in that. That was placed within the legislation, but we didn't have to make that change because we already had done that. Zero tolerance for school-related crimes is the next school board policy to be changed. And that one actually has to do with providing a rebuttable, rebuttable presumption when a student imposes self-defense for the safety of others. It would not require, as long as he's only using the force required to stop that safety concern from happening, he would not then be subject to punishment for a zero tolerance when there's that fighting that might take place. So that is the zero tolerance section. The next section is with respect to the administration of medication. Was hoping that there was going to be an administrative rule that was going to give additional and better clarification. As a result, this may have to come back because, as you may or may not be aware, the administrative rules are continuing to be adjusted and amended by DOE. This one has not come before them yet. And so this is 100% based upon the House Bill language of 1537, which sets forth that a student may possess and use a medication regulated by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration for over the counter use to treat and/or relieve headaches while on school property or at a school-sponsored event or activity without a physician's note prescription. So that is verbatim from the statutory change, but there has been no administrative rule guidance on that. Should that happen and should it require us to make some adjustments to that policy, we will bring that back before you all. The next change is to student records. Student records, really, the only change there actually has to do with, again, changing the verbiage of threat assessment to threat management evaluations. Children of military families. This change is a result of House Bill 633. And what this allows is if a military family moves here in the middle of the year and if they want to be a part of an IB program or a part of a special academic program that this district offers. It's not relevant to whether or not we already are at capacity. They are entitled to be placed within that program and we would have to adjust accordingly. Report of misconduct is the next policy change. The report of misconduct is a result of the legislative changes to 1012797. Most specifically, it has to do with the law enforcement agency notifying the district within 48 hours. They have to notify the superintendent when an employee is arrested for a felony or a misdemeanor involving the abuse of a minor child. Should that happen, we then need to notify the parents of that employee who may have had direct contact that there has been an arrest of, of there being a felony of abuse to a minor child because their child was in front of that individual. So it also deals with the parental notification. The next change has to do with emergency evacuation drills. The word evacuation has been removed and it now is just emergency drills. And the changes with respect to the emergency drills are related to House Bill 543 and Rule 6A 1.0018. It has to do with those rule changes and statutory legislative changes. But it has to do with the number of drills that have to be conducted. More specifically, that certain emergency drills have to take place within the first 10 days of the beginning of the school year. And then the remaining have to be within 45 day intervals throughout the session. So that change is documented through the Emergency Evacuation Drill, which is now going to be titled Emergency Drills. The final three policies that are before you for consideration. The first one that I want to speak to you on is Artificial Intelligence and Acceptable Use Policy. So what I will tell you, Board, is this actually is not the result of an actual legislative change requiring us to do this policy. It indirectly is related to House Bill 379 because that had to do with internet safety. I attended a Firma Conference wherein an attorney from Atlanta was speaking to school districts throughout the state. This was not just small school districts. Duval County was there, Miami-Dade was there, so Broward County was there. So it was large school districts and small school districts attending this conference. And the question was asked, how many school districts had an artificial intelligence acceptable use policy? There's not a single district in the state that has an AI policy. However, we are fully aware of ChatGPT. We are fully aware of the potential for plagiarism. We do have a policy related to plagiarism. We also are fully aware of generative artificial intelligence and how if you put information into it, how there could be a failure and misunderstanding of how that information is to be used. So it's providing guidance not just to students regarding artificial intelligence and all of the programs that are out there, but also it is a reminder to our staff with respect to how artificial intelligence, if it is being used, how it is to be used throughout this district. The next policy is operation of unmanned aerial vehicles or drones. We do have a drone program and so there were recent administrative code changes, again, related to drone policies. And so that is, are related to when drones are being used by schools. And so that is the purpose for this policy. The final and last policy that I want to present to this board is the Internet Safety Policy. And we are required, again, by statute to have an Internet Safety Policy. That was due to House Bill 379. And so you will see in here that this is a brand new policy. It is very large. It contains the TikTok language with respect to not being permitted to be used. It contains in here inappropriate network usage, the supervision, cyberbullying, bullying, the adoption of an Internet Safety Plan. And so all of those changes are in here for consideration by this board. So those are the draft policies. It is coming to you this evening for the sole and specific purpose of permission to advertise with three very new policies up for consideration. Certainly, there will be the potential for feedback from community members, from staff, from district, and certainly from you all if there are any questions or concerns. It will sit for 30 days before coming back to you for final and full adoption.
So we're voting on the last three?
You're voting, no, this is, you're voting on everything just to be advertised. Because all of these proposed changes to policy have to be adopted by the board. But this is just to go ahead and advertise in the public. These will be published in the newspaper for the community to know about them. Any questions?
I have a question on the AI portion. So do our teachers have any tools that can identify plagiarism and things like that? If they can scan in an assignment and score it, say it just looks like it might have been used AI or something along those lines?
So my understanding is there were programs that were being used. So one of the things that I do need to also let you know is that with those programs that teachers may use, we do have to, and that's all about this online agreements. Anything where we are using programs and software where student information could be contained or could be shared and could be uploaded to servers. We do have the obligation to notify parents of that. We have to enter into online agreements. So yes, there are programs. Yes, in the past, teachers have utilized programs. However, all programs right now, Teresa Phillips and myself, we have been reviewing all online agreements, making adjustments accordingly. We, I'm really happy to let you know, we have been successful in negotiating an agreement with Cambridge University regarding our program with Cambridge. We also are finalizing and coming to an agreement with one of our dual enrollment colleges, Daytona State. So I'm really happy to be able to tell you that. So we continue to push forward with making sure that we are in compliance and making sure that any and all online agreements, any and all areas where student information is being shared, uploaded and or potentially being used, that we are entering into all agreements. I am also happy to share with you that we have been able to sort of put to rest Adobe because Adobe did have an agreement pending or in existence with DOE and we're able to rely upon that as being noticed. Finally, I wanted to bring something up, having nothing to do with policy, but I did want to let Ms. Hunt know. One of the legislative changes is with respect to the potential for when we have our health insurance policies, our dental policies and everything, and the ability to join forces with like groups. And I did approach NIFAC with the potential and idea that we look at whether or not all of the NIFAC school districts would be interested in partnering together so that we would be a large buying power group to potentially reduce the costs, if it would work, for health insurance, dental. And so that is something that we are looking at. And I agreed with NIFAC to be a member of that, a couple of the districts to look into that potential. So I did want to just share that with you of NIFAC is looking at that, recognizing that there's more buying power in numbers.
Yeah, we're all self-insured. We are.
So yes, there are, yes, and there are several districts in the effect that are self-insured as well. And there could be districts that are fully insured that would want to flip over.
Flip over, yeah, absolutely. Any questions, any further questions?
Chair Masara, I apologize. I need five minutes. I'd hate to.
You may have five minutes. We'll take a five minute break.
Is that okay? Because I'd like to be here.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're gonna break until, we'll give you even longer, 2:20. That's a 10 minute break. We'll start at 2:20. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
I'll take advantage of it, too.
We can talk, so I've got some thoughts that we can talk about also if it's still on the agenda tonight. But just to kind of give everybody a heads up of my thinking. I, you know, I really do feel like at the last business meeting when this was brought up, that we should have been advised that there was a conflict of interest with our, you know, I don't think there, I think there's a conflict of interest with our attorney giving us the legal counsel on her own contract. So, um...
Sorry, I'm not sure I'm providing you that.
Well, can we leave this first?
Okay, first of all, do we agree? Do we agree to have the conversation now?
Yeah.
Do we have a consensus?
I'll, I'll...
Yes, yes, Sally, yes, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we have a consensus. So let's go.
Okay, so I guess I just wanted to share, um, this is one thought, um, that, and I know, a full disclosure, I reached out for some guidance on this because I didn't quite know what to do. And the advice was that, um, uh, because we should have outside counsel, um, to be able to answer any questions about the contract options available, um, just someone available, an unbiased person. Um, and that we as a board can, um, identify or select a board member to serve as the board liaison to facilitate that outside counsel to come in and serve to answer our questions or to be available for, um, the board meeting in which we would discuss this. My recommendation is that we do that and that we, uh, instead of having the full discussion tonight, especially with Dr. Conklin being gone, that we would maybe October 3rd, when we're already meeting, um, have a special meeting, uh, with that outside counsel present, um, to have this formal discussion. I don't know if I articulated that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we obviously have not talked to each other, but I'm sure we've talked to the same people who have advised us. And yeah, I got the same kind of guidance. And that's kind of the motion I would like to go in is that we obtain, um, an outside legal counsel, um, on our options for the contract and, and, um, yeah.
And just for transparency for the public, um, my, because I think I could share this. I reach out a lot to, um, the Florida School Board Association. So in case there's any confusion on, you know, if it's someone local, it is not. I, I reach out a lot, um, to the Florida School Board Association. So they have given me some guidance on this. Um, they remain always impartial. Um, but, uh, Christie, I guess my question for you, and again, we need to get consensus on, on this discussion. Um, but I would be curious to see if you would be, if there is consensus, if you would be available to act as that liaison.
Oh.
Well, what do we, first off, I just want to explore, um, what are we seeking? What, uh, what, because we, this came up at the last meeting and, uh, it was brought up that, that, that we wanted to discuss the contract, right? That's kind of vague, right? So what direction are we going with this here? If we're going to bring in an outside counsel, what are we, what, what advice are we seeking as a board, right? From this council? Can we start, start with that?
I'm, I mean, I'm wondering, do I make that statement tonight or now?
Well, you know, I think we need to make a personal statement. I think it's more related to the contract. So what are you trying, what is your mission to hiring an outside counsel, which has to be an employment-based attorney? You know, because employment attorney is far different than criminal and everything else. So it would have to be an outside-based employment attorney. So the question is, do we want to proceed with that? I have mixed emotions. I understand your point and I got the same information because I also spoke to FSBA. And the only, the only thing that I find, which I'm not sure about, is a contract is pretty clear. I mean, it's black and white. You're wanting to find out what your, your capabilities are, is my guess. And that, that's what I hear, options. It's pretty clear what, what it says in here, every area. I don't, that's my only concern, why are we hiring somebody to tell us what's right here in black and white? Although we're not attorneys, I understand that too. So, share with me what your thoughts are.
I think for me, Chair Masaro, it's maybe under the spirit of I don't know what I don't know. And so I can look under the Florida statute, um, at the definition, for instance, of misconduct. Um, and it reads pretty clear, but, uh, it feels a little bit like I stayed at a Holiday Inn Express last night if I try to weigh in on my interpretation because I'm just not, that's just not my background. So in my comfort zone, because the discussion that I would like to have is around the continuation of, uh, the attorney's contract. And so because of the, um, the gravity of that decision, I would hate for it to just be five elected board members who do not have legal backgrounds doing our best interpretation. And I, um, I feel like this would be something where we would need to have our, uh, T's crossed and our I's dotted.
Yeah, like you said, we are not attorneys, so we certainly don't want to create any issues for the district. But I, I do believe that the relationship, uh, with our attorney, just myself personally, it's been fractured and, um, you know, I don't know that we want to, I can only speak for myself, but, you know, do we want to continue this contract?
Okay, there, there is very clear litigation as far as what misconduct is and it's very serious. And if there was misconduct committed, actually, you would probably be arrested by statute.
By statute.
By statute.
But I think this is what I'm trying to avoid, right?
Yeah, but that's, but that's what I'm trying to tell you. If there was misconduct and any of these board members were aware of misconduct, it would have needed to be reported to the Florida Board.
Let me clarify, when I say this is what I want to avoid, I want to avoid, first of all, Attorney Gavin should, in my opinion, not be weighing in on this conversation, right? She has a conflict of interest, um, at least this particular subset perhaps of the conversation. I also, when you say, well, you would be arrested, I, I would like, I believe this needs to remain completely objective. I do not want, I do not, um, I do not think your, um, understanding of this is any more, um, I don't want to use the word relevant to the conversation. I, I would not expect for you to trust my thoughts on this any more than I should, should trust your thoughts on this.
It's not thoughts, it's, it's statute.
But that's your, but I think that's where we get into it.
It's not my interpretation of statute, it's word for word.
Okay, so, and again, I think this in the spirit of we can agree to disagree. My opinion is that we should seek outside counsel to ensure that we are having this conversation correctly and certainly legally.
Board, here's what I'm going to say. You absolutely have the ability and, um, authority to seek outside counsel with question related to my contract. I think it's very wise that you would state that you do not want me to provide you that guidance. That is a fair statement. So if you are seeking that, um, I don't know what you are, you know, requesting. Typically pursuant to my contract, I can't secure, um, outside legal counsel without your authority and approval. It requires you all to grant me that authority to seek outside counsel. You're seeking outside counsel for yourself, um, and so, uh, we will have to go ahead and engage that outside counsel. They would have to enter into a contract with the district to provide services for that specific purpose. I don't know whether you all have a individual in mind of who you would like to perform that, so that we can begin setting that up.
I think what we want to do is, as peacefully as possible, just come to mutual terms on whatever the future looks like.
Well, and Attorney Gavin just said something, I think, that just further lends to this. I mean, you know, whether you should have an attorney, I, I just, you know, you said, well, I need board approval for, for the spend on that. I, because this is not my area of expertise, I, um, quite quickly would appreciate, uh, this consensus in entering into an agreement with outside counsel to advise us.
Yes, ma'am.
To advise us on what we should be providing to you.
Sure.
So...
That's why I was trying to say, absolutely, it's, it's, I can't engage, I can't go ahead and hire someone because I feel I need assistance without coming to you. So it is your purview is what I was trying to say.
And I think that was the recommendation, was that there be a representative from the board to serve as a liaison. Again, my, my nomination would be, uh, Christie Chong, uh, to serve on behalf of the board to, uh, take the steps necessary to put this arrangement together.
I'm not opposed to Christie, although I, I would throw Will's name into that.
I actually was going to nominate Will.
I'm, I'm good with...
I'd find either way.
Me too.
Let me explain why. The only reason, my only reason is that all of us, the four of us have completed the evaluation. Will has not, which leaves him wide open, which I think is a good thing in this particular case. So take a situation where he didn't do the evaluation, therefore he's got an open mind. That's why I would nominate Will. And I know Christie's really busy with her kids and job too.
I love that.
Not that you're not, not that you're not, but I think that it would be good, and you would have to contact FSBA and they will lead you to contacting and negotiating a contract with an attorney, outside employment attorney. And then you have to have the meeting and then you report their findings, provide them with a contract before their findings. How do you feel about that?
So this direction, if we decide to take it, um, we can give that direction here? Or do we need to make a motion tonight at the business meeting to put this in the motion?
We would have to make a motion this evening, but we, but the point is, that's what that would be for.
So we will still want to keep this on the agenda for tonight? And then make a motion to hire, uh, an outside counsel that is, uh, focused on employment law?
Yeah, FSBA will direct you, they have people, they have people. That, that's what they do, is employment law, and that's what you want to focus on, because then they know what they're dealing with.
Yes, I, I, if that's the will of the board, I'd be willing to be that liaison. And, um, how would we go about, so basically would it be my determination on which attorney we choose to, to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So...
Yes, I mean, it's in, this would be your ballgame, basically. And then you would have that, whether it's a Zoom meeting, a real meeting, or whatever, they'll have the contract. They will go over it and it'd be your responsibility to report the findings back to this group. I would say October 3rd, does that make sense? That would be the next meeting.
Yeah, and if I can just clarify or just what you're saying, when you say the word findings, my understanding of this process would be that Will would reach out, secure someone, and then that person would direct us as far as do we, you know, have individual meetings with, with that? When you say findings, it sounds almost, um...
Would I, in this area...
They're interpreting the contract as well.
But however this looks like, if you're going to, I'm going to be in control of this, right?
Yes.
To set up, if I'm going to set up a special meeting, uh, for, for the, all the board to, to, to chime in, whether it's individual meetings with each individual board members, are you going to allow me to put this into place the way I see it's, it's best to serve, um, the, the board and what their, their...
My request would be we separate that. I mean, my request, and I'm, I mean, this is my, my opinion only, um, my request would be that we discuss tonight, either now or tonight, what that looks like. Do we have a special meeting in two weeks, three weeks? The recommendation actually was that we schedule two meetings and cancel one depending on, you know, is, is, can this all get done within two weeks or do we need the full three weeks? I know that Will, I would want to talk with this person, you know, so if you're like, no, it's just going to be me, that's not my comfort level.
I don't, that's not what I, how I want it to be. I want it to be, I want this, whoever we choose here to be able to give, uh, advice to us also individually because we all may have
Yeah.
different, um, concerns about the contract and the type of legal advice that we may, um, want to, you know, achieve. I guess, if, we just need an, an overall clear objective here, right? If we're doing this, if we're going to seek the counsel, right? Are we saying, here, we just want to individually ask you questions about different components of the content? You mentioned that you'd like to, um, to explore, um, the not continuing with the attorney, termination of the contract, is, is, is that what I'm hearing from you?
I think we're looking for options up through and including, uh, and, and sorry, I'm just going off of what I'm hearing, Christie.
Where the direction of this is, is, if, if that's, if I'm going to take on this role, so that I can, um, you know, talk to the FSBA and tell them what, overall, what, what, what area of the contract we're looking to focus on, right? Because there's many sections of this contract that may not have any relevance to the conversation.
My focus is on the termination section of the contract. That's, that's my focus.
And, um, so if we're, since we're, we're having this discussion and, um, we'll have to vote on it tonight, we might as well start talking about what the expectations of the board are and how you'd like this to, to look like individually or, um, as a collaborative conversation with this attorney, so that I can best lead this, um, and, uh, put this together in a way that's going to work for everybody. So you said you wanted to, to talk about, so give me an idea of what you think this should look like.
I think we need to look at, um, like I said, a mutual agreement of buying out the contract, whatever that may look like, without us getting, you know, I want to choose my words carefully here.
Yeah, I, I...
So it's basically, this is, this is focused around termination of the contract. Let's just put it out, because if that, if that's what it is, we just, we just got to say it.
Yeah, no, that's great. My, my focus, if you look at the contract, my focus and my questions are related to termination. Now Christie Chong, she may already have some ideas of, of how, you know, what she would maybe, her ideas are for this, you know, what she's thinking for her situation. I have my own thoughts on it. Uh, she has her experience with Attorney Gavin, I have mine, uh, Will, uh, I'm sure we all have ours. So, um, I don't know, so I would hate for you to take what Christie just said and that, and that speaks for the board, just as I wouldn't want you to take anything I say that that speaks for the board. So I, what, here's, if I can just nail it. I have questions about the termination section of the attorney's contract. I have questions. I, right now, do not have an unbiased legal counsel available to me to answer any questions that I have around that. So I am looking for us to enter into an agreement with outside counsel to, if nothing else, to be available, whether it's consulting, whether, I don't know how to say it, um, available to us, and perhaps to your point, Will, to give us direction on, um, again, whether it is, uh, should we be providing an attorney, you know, for Attorney Gavin, I just to, to give us next, uh, to give us direction.
Sure, well, what I think, you know, when you, when you're consulting with an attorney, you, you have specific questions and they give you legal opinions, right? And so we need to have those specific questions, right? And, uh...
Would it be possible for each of us to send our questions to you and then you get the answers? My concern of having individual meetings is I'm watching the cash register going, ka-ching, 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 ka-ching. This is going to cost us already, okay? One, at the, right at the start. So I would like to keep that down to a minimal cost. That would be conversation with one person answering questions. So if you have specific questions that you want resolved, you would get them to, to Will. Then Will would take all of our questions to the attorney that is hired, get the answers, and then bring them back. That, that's the cheapest, least expensive way to get the answers that you're looking for.
And what I would add to that is I would leave the door open, um, for, of course, maybe a follow-up session of questions, right? So if sometimes answers were, uh, bring up more questions, right? So we could have an, another round of questions. And then after that, if, if, if merit, if needed, or if wanted, I should say, um, that we would, that if an individual board member wanted an individual meeting with the, uh, that attorney, we could make that available. But going in saying, hey, let's get our questions answered, because that, that's, that's really what we want, is a legal opinion of the individual, uh, questions that we have, so that we can take action, right? So, and, and know that we're doing it in a, in a way that, that is legal and that, um, is in the best interest of the district, right? So I think that would be a good idea, that everybody submit their questions. I'll get them in front of the attorney, we'll get clear answers back, and we'll have another round if necessary, follow-up questions. And then, then we will, uh, open it up to individual meetings if an individual member feels that it's necessary.
So I can tell you right now, I, I'm going to want an individual meeting. So, um, I, you know, the whole purpose of a board attorney is, um, not only to advise the board as a whole, but also to, for individual board members to seek out guidance, to fulfill their role, to seek out guidance, to make sure that they are, um, following, uh, law, uh, following policy. So I mean, from, so I, I hear the idea, the kind of, in the capacity of the board as a whole, but I think I am looking to have outside counsel as District One, um, to be able to...
Well, I'm open to that, like I said, I want to leave that door open. I'm just saying, it's typically a legal opinion. You are, you are, you're looking for, uh, an opinion of an attorney before you take action. It's like we did with the FYO, we sent that out to an outside counsel. Said, here's what, we, we don't want to move forward unless we understand, uh, that we're, we're doing this properly, right? And, and we got that back and we, then we move forward accordingly, right? And that's typically what the legal opinion generates, right? So, uh, I think if the questions are just straight and honest and clear on exactly what you want to know and what, and what the end goal is for that question and what you're trying to achieve, then you're going to, you may get the answers that you need from the legal opinion. And we will all get, what will happen is that all of our questions will go, go out to the attorney. They will be answered and we'll all receive the answers to all of our questions so that we could actually all take that information together so that when we come together to make a, an actionable decision on this information, we all kind of have that information. Now, if there's one on, after that, if board members are satisfied with the answers they got from the attorney, right? Then some may say, I don't need to meet with that attorney. But if one feel, feels that they do, then I think they should be afforded that opportunity.
Yeah, and just, um, just, and I think that's, I think that idea is great. Just know I will not participate in that, and let me give you a couple of reasons why. Uh, one, uh, in the spirit of public records requests, I do not, there are things that I feel that if I shared would put our district, uh, in a, as a place of liability, right? There are, so there are things that I would want to share directly with an attorney for the sake of the district, right? So I will not, I, so if you, the rest of the board would like to produce that, I, I will, I will not be. I will need to meet one-on-one with the attorney.
I'm totally okay with that. I consider my questions.
All right, well, I, then, and again, uh, if you choose not to participate in the questions and, and then you wait till you're, you know, we can set up that meeting, we don't, we don't have to delay if you're just not going to do that first part of it, right? And, you know, so that, that's kind of, this is just to give sort of a framework of what this might look like, right? So is this seem, do we have consensus here that we'd like to move forward with this type of arrangement?
Yes, well, we would have to motion tonight, right?
Tonight.
Tonight.
But I just wanted, for me, if I, like, as you're, if I'm going to be leading this, I just want to kind of understand, because we can't, you know, like I said, we can't talk outside of this room.
Correct.
So I need to know today what your expectations are so that we don't necessarily have to call another meeting just for, for, for this, right? So, um...
And Sally's a hundred percent correct, this is all public records access. So if people ask for our questions and the responses, they'll have opportunity to get those. So she's right there. So that's important, you know, that's something you all want to keep in mind, I want to do that. And the other, my biggest thing is, this district is, we know we're financially tight. However, this results is going to be very expensive for this district, not mentioning the effect it has on our school board attorney. And I, I have great, great issues with that. And I'm not going to let this go down as one-person show. Everybody has to be on the same page because you can't just go out and get an interim school board attorney. They don't exist.
Well, that's factually not true. I mean, that is, I've, I've talked with the FSBA about that.
The FSBA told me, well, how come you're getting one story and I'm getting another?
Well, there's not so much interim.
So maybe there's a problem there.
There's contract attorneys you could hire. I mean, many school boards, I, I've talked and spoke with other school boards and, um, not all of them have in-house attorneys. They, they...
No, no, a lot of them contract out, which is more expensive.
Right, well...
Very much more expensive.
You might be surprised.
I would, because we looked to do that years ago.
You might be surprised, it's not, uh, in, in relation to what we're spending right now, it, it may not be, uh, I can't say for sure, right? But you might be surprised from collectively what we're paying for our legal, um, department.
I think you're going to be surprised, Will. Prices for outside attorneys are extremely expensive.
So Chair Masaro, as of right now, I do not feel that I have legal counsel as a board member.
No, I hear you, and that's okay. So you want to take it to the person.
So to me, we can talk about cost and that's fine, but it, that role is so imperative, is so critical to the success of any one board member.
I agree.
And so I hear you, we've talked at length about operational efficiency and, and, and reserve fund budget. So I hope, you know, I'm absolutely in alignment with us spending the, this, to me, this...
I'm looking at the other side of this too, which could be extremely costly to this district. And you're going to be left holding back.
Well, the cost is already, the cost is already great.
Oh, no, it's not, not compared to legal services.
I think you're not understanding my comment. Will might...
No, I think you understand me there. So I think we're good.
Okay, so, yeah, I just, so I just wanted to summarize this, is that the reason we're doing this is because, again, we can't have our attorney advise us on her own contract.
You are correct.
So that is the, the main purpose of why we're doing this. Individually, we will then now get that, um, legal opinion for our concerns, right? So that we can come back collectively as a board and decide what actions, whatever the outcome is, that whatever the consequences are, um, that is going to be on each individual board member's vote, right? Uh, after we compile all this information. But it's important that when we, when we do come down to the, to the vote, that we have all the, we do have all the information available so that we can all make an informed decision based on all the information that we've collected through this effort. So that, that's, that's what I'd like to see at the conclusion of this, um, engagement with an outside counsel.
Can we discuss timeline?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, because three weeks might be kind of pushing it. Because you've got to be, you've got to find attorneys that are available.
What's the next October workshop?
It would be, it would be, um, can, can I ask then to that point? At our next workshop?
Four weeks.
Would Will potentially be able to give us an update? And then at that point, because we should then have, I think meetings have to be publicly noticed by seven days.
October 3rd is our next workshop, yes.
So could we have some, you bring back to us by October, by October 3rd, where we're at with that? And then we could, if, as a board, there's consensus to hold a special meeting? Or if we want to wait till the next school board meeting or hold a special meeting? We can discuss that on the October 3rd workshop agenda?
So if...
The 3rd or the 17th?
The 3rd, the 17th is our second, we would have this meeting on the 17th, at 1:00. And then we'd have the night meeting.
So what I would gather is that, um, tonight, if this is voted in, then immediately I would be contacting FSBA and/or, um, any, any counsel, right? I mean, FSBA is, is just one, one source of that.
It has to be an employment count, that somebody who's outside of, I would also add, outside of Flagler County.
Yeah, I, I would think that that would probably be, uh, we want somebody that's truly our length and there's no conflict of interest.
Yeah, read a contract.
We don't want any of that involved in this.
Patty may also be able to provide, um, attorneys we already have contracts with.
I just, I just want to make sure that we're not limiting this to just an FSBA referral, right? Because there are many attorneys out there that deal in contracts and...
That's employment law.
Employment law, right, employment law goes across the entire spectrum, um, so...
I think they got contracts, right?
Right, so, so, but I, I, it's going to be my purview at the end of the day. And, and I will start with the FSBA because that is, uh, the initial will of the board. And if I, and if, if I feel that the, the counsel they're going to provide is satisfactory, then we'll, we'll move forward with that. But I want the latitude to be able to, uh, go beyond that if I feel...
And negotiate... And negotiate the best price you can.
Yeah, me too.
I would assume, and I know this goes without question, but I would assume this would be somebody who is licensed in Florida. I don't know if licensed is the right word.
That is the right word.
An attorney or a firm licensed in the state of Florida.
Yeah, they're going to be, it has to be somebody who is focused on employment law. It's going to be very focused on that. So it will be somebody who needs those credentials. And if there's any other credentials you want other than that, let me know.
Well, I think that works. But now, we're straight. We're going to vote on a motion tonight to proceed in that matter. 10:03, which is our next meeting, you'll update us on, and then we'll get a better timeline.
For next steps.
Yeah, depending on whatever he finds out.
So are we saying then after 10:03, then at that point...
That's your timeline. Figure out what, yeah, build it.
And then after 10:03, we start with the, with the questions and the meetings and everything after that date? Is that what we're talking about?
I'm open. I know you can't...
If I get a five, you know, I mean, this could, this could take just a few days to identify the attorney.
It could.
So we could open up the questions and everything.
I would recommend that if you're going to write your questions to get them to Will at your earliest convenience. So he has the information to take to the proposed attorney, so they know what they're looking at. And that way, that's where they're going to build their prices off of and how much time it's going to take and how they want to proceed. And then you'll get all the date information, which you then can get back to us on 10:03.
And that's important because the, like I said, the contract is several pages. And if we say, I just, I want you to, to give us a legal opinion about this contract that's too open and they'd have to go through every section. So we need to be very clear on the area that we want them to give a little, a legal opinion on. And from what I gather here today is that we want them to focus in on the termination clause in the contract. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just, I know I've already mentioned this, but again, for the health and benefit of the board, I just, Chair Masaro also spoke to this. Just for the mindfulness of whatever we send to Will, that that will likely end up in the media.
It's public.
And so, just again to...
And that's true. And again, at the end, it's all going to come out public now or later.
Absolutely. Like not hiding anything. I think that this is, I think that this is going to probably all be discussed. I just, it proves to be the timing then of the discussion. If this is allowed to play out with commentary and whatnot. So, I, so Will, thank you so much for taking the charge on that. If I may just ask a quick question for clarity in case it comes up. Do we, LaShaka, I don't know who here, do we know who drafted this contract?
I am not aware of who drafted the contract.
Ms. Gavin, did you draft, did you draft the original contract? As of before our time?
The contract was drafted based upon similar contracts that are throughout the state.
Was it done by another attorney?
Do we have outside counsel?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I drafted the contract utilizing contracts that are used by other attorneys throughout the state.
Okay, so I think that would be important. Will, I would like that shared with that outside counsel, that this contract was drafted by Attorney Gavin. That Attorney Gavin drafted her, her own contract.
Yes, ma'am. And it's similar to my drafting Ms. Moore's contract.
So are you, are you, I guess the question is, is there a concern over that? Is that what we want to?
I would, I would...
Again, that's a question. So what I would say is, although you said that you may not submit questions and you'd like to have a one-on-one, if there are questions like that one...
Love it.
Send it, right? And then, and we'll go, because, and, you know, otherwise, we're going to come back to this video and rewatch it.
The more information you can spare, the better.
That's literally the only one that I'm aware of.
Attorneys charge on time, right?
They do, absolutely.
So we want to try and be as efficient as possible with the information. So when I meet with them, we send in all the information one time so they can tell us what, you know...
And that was the only thing that really I needed information on. The rest, like, that's the only thing I can think of that I wanted to provide to you, that I needed someone else to share with me those details, so...
All right, so, yeah, just as part of this, to send that question in. Should they, because of Sunshine, should they be sending this into somebody else other than me directly?
We can send this to Lorraine. And Lorraine has the administrative assistant. Right, and then Lorraine can forward it on to you. How's that? That make, that make sense for everybody? That works. Ms. Thompson, you good with that? I'm putting you on the line here. I just want to make sure that, that you just forwarded on everything to Will from that point. Thank you.
All right, so I think we have general understanding of what we're doing here, so...
That's for later tonight.
The only question I ask of you is, are you comfortable with my continuing to perform legal services at this time?
I am.
I just want to know because otherwise, I, I need to know whether or not I have continued to provide legal representation at hearings. I have continued to attend hearings, attend IEP meetings on behalf of this district. I want to make sure that you're comfortable and are continuing to do that while this is going on.
Are you asking me, just me or the whole board?
Continuing to do your current job? To, yes, ma'am.
My, my take is outside of resignation, we would expect you to...
I just want to confirm. I am here to serve this board. I am here to serve this district in accordance with my duties. I will continue to perform my duties and responsibilities as set forth in my contract, as set forth in my job description. I have yet to fail to do that. And I will continue to ensure that this board is protected in the manner according to my contract.
So any more discussion regarding...
Anybody? Good? We don't know what's happening now. Okay. All right, then we're going to go down to old business. Thank you, Ms. Gavin. Anybody have old business? New business?
And just real quick under old business, and maybe Jason can speak to this. But I don't know if we want to, today or tonight, just provide an update to the community. Again, we as a board received communication of, I think, a little confusion about Superintendent Moore. Of, you know, I think, I think there's some confusion that you, you have, because we voted for, for your contract, I think there's some confusion that you are in fact not yet the, you are still interim. And so I didn't know if tonight or right now, we wanted to give the community an update on timeline or Jason, if that's available online as far as when is, you know, when is the contract being negotiated? When is the official vote going to happen? That's the only thing I could think of, Chair Masaro, under old business.
Yeah, and that's a good point. We're trying to get dates worked out where we're all available to work out the contract. Hasn't been written yet because there's been a lot of public records requests for it. So Christie hasn't written it because as soon as she does, it's going to go out. And we're, we're trying to get it to the point where we can do that in a timely fashion and sit down and have a conversation so it's not just out in the general public before the shocking against the media, which would be ridiculous. So, so it's what our, our goal is. Hopefully, we'll be, you should be able to go by October 3rd and then move along that process.
So that's the goal?
And well, the 19th would be the vote at 6:00.
Have to have it ready for public view by 3:00.
Yeah, that's our, our goal, so we can get there.
Mr. Wheeler, is that updated? Do you know, if someone wanted to provide public comment, it, it sounds like the 19th would be the meeting we're voting on it. Is that, has that been put out on Facebook or on...
The agenda for the 19th, October 19th? Yeah, it's not live, yeah.
Head of the game here, yeah. But that could be on there. It should be on there. I mean, that's got to be our target, don't you think?
The intention, the intention board was to go ahead and have the contract that has been going to be negotiated with Ms. Moore on the October 3rd as an agenda workshop item. And then it would then just move to the meeting of your business meeting for final approval. And voting that night.
And the 19th.
The one thing that I'm probably going to recommend would be a discussion of whether you want to do any retro pay. So in other words, voted her to be your superintendent. At the September 15th meeting, you begin to be wanting to pay to be superintendent. Just like tonight, you are voting on the administrative, the salaries of the instructional staff and support staff. Those all get retroed, whether or not there's a, have to, not to be retroed, but like, to be beginning after you agree with your contract. Do you have any thoughts?
What do you think about that?
Yeah, I mean...
Thought for all of us to consider.
I just need guidance.
That's a point of negotiation.
Yes, we'll negotiate that. I need guidance from you. We'll, we'll work it out.
And I just would want to make sure as, when that conversation happens, I would want some legal guidance on that as far as what precedent is being set and what would, what could potential implications be, knowing how, you know, district people get moved around and what. So I'm, I'm obviously okay with any decision on that. I just would want to make sure from a legal standpoint.
So would that require an executive session for that type of conversation?
Yes, sir.
No? So...
We'll get it done.
Okay.
All right, so is there any other old business then? New business? Does anybody have new business?
I have something.
Go ahead.
You know, we, four of us completed the attorney evaluation. And, you know, in, in reviewing this piece, there is something, and again, I don't know whether it's policy or whatnot, but as a board, it's really an interesting dynamic where you have essentially an employee with not kind of a one-to-one, direct supervisor or leader, right? It's this kind of five, a group of five. And so I'm going to throw something out. Again, this was in conversation with some trusted advisors. I, I would like to see some type of a monthly executive summary from, you know, we get a, we get us a report from our superintendent, I think weekly in a lot of cases. I would like to see us kind of get the same thing from the attorney as far as visibility to the, the work being done on behalf of the board. I don't know what, because I know we have executive session for certain things, so obviously this would have to be in alignment with, you know, any legal requirements. But, you know, what is being worked on? What's the timeline? A status update? And, and one particular thing comes to mind. It is my understanding that we've been under a desegregation order as a district for like years.
Forever.
Forever, for years.
We have.
And I, it is of my, it's my opinion that one of the reasons that's the case is because as a board, we're not getting these executive summaries or executive updates, right? So if we're seeing at the end of every month, you know, here are these, what, whatever that, that are, I mean, it's the, it's the board, it's dealings of the board. I feel like things like the desegregation order maybe wouldn't go year after year after year. Because we're, it's in our face, right, where we're seeing, there is no status update in October. There is no status update in, right, like, and, and then it allows us as a board to be able to weigh in on whether we want something pushed to the, pushed to the front. So that would be my recommendation, that at the end of each month, we get an executive summary, again, including timelines, an overview. That's something I wanted to bring to the, to the discussion today.
I completely agree. And, I mean, there are, like you mentioned, the desegregation order. There are a lot of things we don't know about and need to. What do we need to do to get closure on those?
Couple things, okay? First of all, there are a lot of situations in school law that are litigation factors that that becomes public record. And that can't be. So it would have to be things that aren't active litigation. And otherwise, just maybe a timeline. I don't think, how can you do a timeline? You know how the court system works. Justice works very, very slowly. And that, that could create an issue, you know, with timeline. But there are other things that were basically in the quarterly reports, which was requested from the previous board. You have the option as a board to determine what the evaluation tool looks like. That, that tool that you saw was created by the previous school board and how it's, how it's operated, the rules and the regulations. It's not exactly matching what's in the contract. If you look at both, there, there's a differences, okay? You can recreate that. You can recreate the tool so that you have it the way you want. You can have, if you want monthly reports instead of quarterly reports, that's probably relatively easy. Just know you won't get all the information because you can't.
Can I be redact, is that the right word, redact?
No, you can't even, I, I don't, that's a question for you. I don't know. About redacting information for public records requests.
So I place in my quarterly reports the litigation that is currently pending. I do not provide detailed information, but notify you when I provide you my report that I'm happy to sit with you and discuss it one-on-one to share with you. We could also, it has not been the pleasure of the prior boards that I have worked with to have executive sessions regarding active litigation. Anything that is in active litigation can be reviewed with the board for purposes of when I am seeking to have authority for settlement. But I have to be very careful and mindful because any reports that I issue to you are subject to public records. And now I am not able to, once I draft it, I can't pull it back and say, this was prepared in anticipation of litigation. It wasn't. It was a notification to you of matters, not prepared in anticipation of litigation. When it is in anticipation of litigation, yes, I am able to redact things. But that's a very specific area.
I, I guess, whatever the answer is, I, as one of five board members, I am uncomfortable with the autonomy given, and this is not even a Christie Gavin conversation. This is just that relationship with the school board attorney. You know, just in thinking through everything, if we have a school board attorney who just kind of owns everything and knows everything, should they quit? Should they pass away unexpectedly? Should I as a board, I mean, these things are the board's responsibility. The attorney is the board attorney. And, and so I know for me as one board member, I would just like more, whether the word is oversight, into just knowing that piece of the business, for lack of better words.
And like I said, I think you can, as a group, we can request that. You know, in the future, if that's how, like, we were at quarterly reports. If you want to change quarterly reports to monthly reports, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't see a problem with that.
But because it's, it's sensitive in the, in the sense that the sending out communications electronically could become public record, maybe jeopardize the case itself, could, could affect settlement proceedings, things like that. I mean, it makes sense that it, it, that maybe it not been communicated in that fashion. But I do believe that we should be more informed on these things because let's face it, when these lawsuits are filed, it's the school board. We are, the school board is being sued, right? And that is the five of us are representatives for the school. So maybe, here's, floating a couple of solutions, right? One, we could leave it because we all have access to the attorney and we can set up a regular meeting, like a meeting with the superintendent, to get individual updates from the school board attorney individually. But if, if in fact it is more of a collective consensus that we would like to do this more as a group, then we could look at it on a quarterly executive session when it comes to, because that's, I believe that is always required in these type of matters from, based on the last meetings that we've had, it had to be an executive session. A quarterly update from the attorney that can give us an update of where we stand with all of our litigation. And then it would just be a standing meeting that we have scheduled and hopefully that, because I, I think that to do it incrementally, that might be a little bit much, a little bit of a burden on the attorney. And it might be more, there may not be that much information, you know, every, between those periods of time, right? So, but within a quarter, that, there, there might be some meaningful updates. Because we know that when it's, when there is something meaningful, the attorney's going to call us in when, when she needs us, right, to give her direction. But outside of that, maybe if... maybe a quarterly, um, attorney updates.
I, I love the cadence of a quarterly-
Executive session.
Yeah, executive session.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I like it too.
And, you know, and then, you know, when you say sometimes there might be more, sometimes there might be less, I envision like one executive summary template that would initially, um, and again, I'll have to review the quarterly report, but, you know, that would initially kind of have, take a little bit more time to do, but really then the quarterly updates would truly just be kind of a, an adding to where, where are we?
Yeah, and I, I think that's, that's good, because they would be private, because it's executive session talking about litigation, and we could have our conversations, which would be protected, and it wouldn't be public knowledge, wouldn't put any of our litigation at risk, and that's what we have to do, I'd like that.
Yeah, and the other thing I'll just add to it is, you know, as far as I know, as far as setting up private one-on-one meetings, I as one board member can say, hey, this desegregation order, I, I think we need to take it on, right? Like, it, it's just been lingering forever, but I, I, I have no, by myself, right, that one-on-one meeting does nothing, right? But, and when we come together as a board, and so maybe that, that, maybe that's a bad example, because that is not an executive session worthy, uh, confer, or, you know, appropriate conversation.
No, it couldn't be.
But we really can't take any, we alone can't instruct the attorney one way or the other, but we collectively can give guidance, so I, I love the idea, um, of the quarterly, thank you, Will, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good suggestion. I also think that I meet often with the attorney as well as the interim superintendent or superintendent, just to make sure I'm up on everything. Those one-on-one meetings are very important, because it gives me the opportunity to get clarification on a lot of topics, whether it's with, you know, school topic with the superintendent, or litigation, or things that are happening in the district here, so I, that's, and it's, it just gives me the clarification to know what's going on. I meet at least two to three times, well, probably four times a month, for sure, minimal, minimal. If, if we took the time to have those one-on-one meetings, I think it would really help understand, and gives you the option to get these questions out there, to get the answers to. So when we do come to meetings where we have to make, you have that knowledge, and it just, it's very helpful.
And just for the benefit of the community, if maybe it's listening, um, because it sounds like there's an assumption that, um, maybe other board members are not doing that, so just for the benefit of the community, I, I do want to share, I can't speak for the other two, uh, board members in the room, but I certainly have, um, had lots of, of meetings as well, so I, I agree with, I agree with you, uh, that it is important for us to be knowledgeable as we're making these decisions.
Yeah, it helps, I mean, it just helps, it just makes it easier to do your jobs, all of us, and that, just to let you know, it helps me a lot. All right, so is that, are we good on that?
So, just to close that out, then, are we, are we going to move forward now with a quarterly executive session?
Do, should we bring that up as a motion tonight?
Is that a procedural thing?
I think we can just agree.
No, no.
Board, if, if it's something that if you would like to move forward on that, that doesn't have to be, um, voted on, if you are wanting to have executive sessions brought to you, I just need to make sure we are compliant with everybody, notice upon that executive session, that it's placed, that it gets scheduled, and, um, we will, um, be limited to only discussing active litigation that is, um, subject to, uh, reporting and consideration by this board, um, because, and I'm going to give you an example, we might get a notification letter, an intent to sue until it actually has a complaint filed, it is not active litigation, and I would not be able to meet with you on that in executive session. I can share with you on a one-on-one conversation that it's been received, and so futuristic that coming to us and a, a reaction, but I cannot bring that to an executive session.
Yeah, I, I think it would be good to set the quarterly meetings annually, so we know when they are, so every one of us can plan, I would assume early morning or late afternoon is probably the best times for most of us, so depending on what our jobs are and where you're headed, but if it's a certain day of the quarterly marking, I'm set for the whole year.
Well, I would say if we can tie them in with, you know, with our regular meetings, that, on the, either of those two days, however they fall.
Yeah, we can do it.
Four times a year.
The only other thing you, um, board, is we would still potentially have to meet for special executive session, and I'm just using as an example, you know, we may have a quarterly meeting, and the matter that, um, we discuss, I say to you, oh, we're in preliminary, um, discovery, this matter probably, you know, will not be going to trial for another year, okay, but hypothetically, we decide to go ahead and do mediation, and it's out, it's in between the two quarterly reports, if I have to get authority from you to be able to settle the case, or the attorney needs to get authority from you to settle the case, you would need to hold an executive session for that.
Yeah, I think we'll be available on, on demand for that.
Yeah.
And then we can decide at that point, if, if it's close enough, and, and you give us, uh, the briefing at that point, we can still cancel the, the, the future one if, if we solve it in that, in that one. But I think it's just a good idea to have a scheduled one, um, because it could be just the same thing, where you might say, oh, I need to get this, but we have that already scheduled, so we'll, and it's not that sensitive, I can, I can save it till that already scheduled meeting, right?
Absolutely.
Can I make a recommendation, and I don't mean to be too weedy, but, I mean, do we go off of the calendar year and the first month of every quarter, so that would be January, April, is it July and October? Like, is-
I think we can.
I mean, that, that's a acceptable schedule.
Yeah, we can, that would work, I mean, it's just a matter of getting a standard, sticking to it, and if we need to make an adjustment, we can, but then it would be advertised, and we don't have to worry about that, people know plenty about it.
Because I know, Christie, you tend to, when you take off of work, you take it off for, you know, usually when we have meetings, that, those are usually very good days.
Meeting dates that would work, meeting dates would work fine, they seem to work, and it'd only be in like an hour meeting, log them up in an hour and a half.
So does that, does that, obviously Dr. Conklin can weigh in when she's back, but I mean, that would be my recommendation, uh, that it is the first month of each calendar year quarter on that Tuesday of the, um-
The first Tuesday.
The, the first Tuesday, um, that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
So let me ask this then, because that would mean that this October third would be our first one. Which I know, I, I mean, I would personally appreciate, because then that would, we can-
All right, so attend, so we, can we, we've got plenty of time to advertise that, attend three.
Let's start it with, let's get started.
We have, we have what, uh, three o'clock that day, so we'd have to have it like one o'clock?
Uh, um, we'll get with Ms. Thompson for her to send out, um, a ti, a time, and then we go from there.
I mean, how, I mean, to get, we should try and time it, so it's not too far gapped out of anything, this, I wouldn't imagine this is going to be a very long meeting for an update.
So between one and two, because we have three, so, let her check it out and see what we, what's built.
Okay, just, just figure out what, what the expected amount of time is, so we don't have a huge gap in between meetings.
It would have to be no more than an, an hour, I would think, for this conversation, and then go from there.
Great.
Okay.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
That's new, anybody else have new business? I have one. I've been getting a, a number of contacts about our policy of eight-thirty, which is disaster preparedness, and, and basically the complaint is, we have professional employees that are paid hourly, and they're being made to make up that, the hours that they lost when they couldn't go to work because of the emergency situation where we had to close the schools for the hurricane. This is a problem last year, so we can't pay people who have it, who did work, that's the statute, we know that. But, a lot of school districts, because they want to work, they can't work, because there's a state of emergency, they don't think they should have to be making up that time, they shouldn't be paid. And I look, so I went to eight-thirty, and I pulled it, and basically, it says, therefore in the event of a local or state emergency, and upon the request of the local emergency management agency, the district shall participate in emergency management effort, and we have to close schools, because we need to use them as shelters, I think we all know that. But item three there says, in the event the superintendent officially closes a school district office or combination of work centers to employees, the affected employees shall be paid for their regularly scheduled hours. Now, what we need to do, and the end of that says, the resulting rescheduling of days missed, if you reschedule the days, should be no financial impact to the twelve-month employees. So, we have one of two things to do, we can leave it like it is, but I think if you leave it like it is, we, um, we, I think we're going to have to pay our employees for the days, they, you know, they can't, or they can't work, or we need to change the language, and that's another option, so I just want you to be aware of that, and we can look into it.
I, I definitely, before, um, rendering any opinion about that, I do ask for direction to work with Attorney Gavin and whatever else work that we need to do around this, um, because not just policy, we also have to look at, um, statute related to making up time, so what I'm hearing is that you would like for us to look further into that policy as well as statute.
Something has to be somewhere or the other.
So Superintendent Moore, I would, yes, yes, and also, Chairman Serra, I really appreciate you bringing that up, because, uh, we have employees who have bills that come every month.
And to be clear, all of our employees have, were paid for the day that was made up. The question is, should they have to make up the time that they were paid for that they did not work? Is that the question, um, Chair?
Yeah, they, they, they don't, they don't-
Everybody was paid.
Yeah, they got their money.
So that makes sense, like if I-
But now they want them to make up the time, and they can't make it up at home, or they can't, they have to find someplace to squeeze in the eight hours of work they missed.
So it's not like, and, um, so forgive me, but it's my understanding that school was going to be closed this day for teacher in-service or whatever, but now, so like if I have somebody attendance, I would assume, would, would they regularly still come in on those in-service days, or is it like they're just swapping, like they're working out this day instead of this day? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, we have, um, October sixteenth was scheduled to be a make-up day, um, that is what, a day that was used to make up instructional time for our students. The way our calendar is built, we have enough time, and that information is going to go out to our families, um, on Thursday, we have enough time within our instructional calendar that our students do not have to make up the day that they missed, and so-
Okay.
Everyone would have come in and worked on the October sixteenth, but there still would be a category of people who were working on the sixteenth regardless of if there were school or not, and that is, that is a category of individuals that Chairman Serrano is asking that we look into.
They're working and not being paid? I don't understand.
They, they would have to come in and work, right, to make up the hours that they would be paid.
So they didn't, so they, they didn't report to work because the, the school was closed, because they couldn't, they aren't paid for that time?
Right, but now they have to make up eight hours somewhere, and, and they have to submit their paperwork that they worked those eight hours.
So we're paying them when they were going to be paid, but then the expectation is that they make it up, and then the question is like, when do they?
Why? They want to know why, when they think they don't have to.
Oh, well, that's an entire conversation.
Yeah.
Can I just add like a crazy, um, thing to the conversation? When this last, um, closure happened, actually where my mind went to was again, in the spirit of talking about community partnership, um, listen, I don't want to get into global warming, that is a whole topic, but, um, there is a concern of mine, that we, that our schools are being used as shelters, so, you know, if, if we find year after year that there are more and more hurricanes, so to give a little context, I grew up in northeast Nebraska, okay? And if there was a potential blizzard coming, you did not know the day before if school was going to be opened or closed, they kind of, it was a wait and see, and maybe we had a late start, because it was my understanding that as long as students are there for lunch, like you got the state funding, is that, I don't know if any of that makes sense? So we did a whole heck of a lot of late starts, um, and so my question is, just to go way off, is it possible to work with Flagler County, other municipalities to find out, are there other buildings that could be used as shelters, like a community center, like, so that, because when you're talking about a hurricane, and we just never quite know where it's going to go, or how bad it's going to be or not be, um, where, you know, this level of wind, the buses can still go safely, but, you know, I, I just hate the idea of us having to close down, um, when maybe we didn't have to, or maybe just from a safety perspective, if it's at all stormy, we just want to close down anyway, I just, that was a thought that I had.
So we do work, this is a continual conversation, we do work with our, um, different municipalities, that we work with the emergency operating center, um, around, um, facilities to use, and, you know, the works and plans of other facilities in order to serve in that capacity. Um, when we have a conversation around school closing, it is because there is intermittent weather that will prevent us from being able to go to school, and so-
Not that we're serving, not because it must be a shelter.
Not just because we are being a shelter, so i- in this time, when that decision was made, that decision was ba, made based on the potential for weather that we had. Now, we also do serve as a, um, shelter, and, um, all of our, um, all of the different organizations have been extremely, um, we've, we kind of mastered it, I guess, to say, what is the, we want to finish school that day, we not, we don't run the release, but we also want to be very sensitive to the fact that we don't want individuals on our campus when our students are there, um, so we do work very, very closely, but when we make a, and, let's speak about this one storm we just had, when we make a decision to close school, it's because, um, we need to sc, close school because of the weather that will prevent our, us from being able to safely transport our students, not just because we serve as a shelter.
It's been a bit now, so I don't, forgive me, I don't remember, this past storm, I think ended up being a bit of a nothing burger, right?
It happens.
And, and I guess that's just, and again, this doesn't have to be a conversation for today, I guess maybe just to put it out there, that if we find that there are more and more hurricanes, that is just something that I would recommend that this board think about, to see if, again, if it's a ten o'clock late start where we can, um, because these hurricanes-
I think we just need to also consider, even though that last storm wasn't much, we were still under like a tornado watch or something, and that means the kids got to sit in the hallway, right?
Here's a caveat, schools are owned by taxpayers, that's who owns these buildings, it's their buildings, you know, and when we have threatening weather, the shackle or whoever's in charge, and our team is meeting with the emergency services right over here behind us, and they're trying to determine where is it going, what is it doing, how much wind, if it's forty miles per hour or more wind, we can't put our buses out, buses can't go. So they make all those calls, but then they decide whether they open or they close, or they open and-
And we, we want to be sensitive also to the needs of our families and our employees, you know, so making the call at the right time to determine, you know-
For planning.
Can people safely, can they plan appropriately? Can they safely evacuate or come in if they need to? Um, so we're thankful that the last storm did not have an impact on us, um, but I believe that we made the right call in, in closing school, and I think that we made the right call in closing school at the time that we closed school, um, and, you know, we'll continue to work with that as we, as we move forward.
Yeah, and can I clarify, I do not question that at all.
No, 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 and we do work with, yes, we do work with our, yes.
And also, because I don't want you to think that, I, I think, Superintendent Moore, just so you know where I'm coming from, um, we are seeing unprecedented weather, so it's, to me, it's not even a conversation of like, what has happened in the past, it's just the mindfulness of, what if we did ever have like eight hurricanes that were in the area, or potentially in the area, and what would that mean to, because I, I hear taxpayers, and we're, like, don't, like, awesome.
It's statute, though, I believe, it's statute.
I mean, we've had, definitely had those times where we've had multiple hurricanes back, back to back, to back to back.
We had four, the, the, way back, two thousand, two thousand and three, it was boom, 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 boom.
Yeah, I think it was like twenty, two thousand and four. I was like, I was in college at that time, they had to start over the whole semester.
Yeah, we got over it.
Because you just missed so much?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, so no, listen, um-
But we do work with them, I want to, I could, I think that's a misnomer too, that we do work with emergency services, and we do have conversations around, are there other buildings, um, while also making sure that we're good stewards and good partners, um, because we do know that our buildings are, um, ready and prepared to, to go, and we, we work through it.
It sounds like there's a lot that goes into it.
It's a lot that goes into it.
So, I, thank you for sharing, I just, um, because, Chairman Serra, just so you know my, what I'm, where I'm coming from, it is, um, it is about our students fulfilling their requirements, and what would it mean if we had more, and are we set up to be able to, so it was just kind of future thinking.
Just think of those areas of Florida that were demolished by storms. Just think of those areas in Florida that were demolished by storms. They have students that have to make their requirements too, and it's devastating. Mexico Beach, look at that, it was completely wiped away. I have friends up there, it's hard, it's really hard, and you just do the best you can, and the governor and our government works to help us do the best we can.
No, but Superintendent Moore, thank you for sharing, because I just think a lot of people probably don't realize all that goes, you know, goes into those different decisions.
Lots and lots of meetings.
Okay, anything else? No, all right, going to public comment, public comment, anybody?
There is no public comment.
There is no public comment. All right, closing comments, anybody? Late tonight?
All right, yeah, I just, it was a great night at the Potato Bowl.
I'm saving that for tonight.
So we had a good time with the, and I had my two boys with me who are going to be future pirates, so although their team didn't win that night, we congratulate FPC on a good one.
They may by the time they get to there, that's my thoughts.
Maybe they might be on the team, who knows?
They might be, you never know.
That's all.
I don't have any comments.
Yeah, I'll reserve for tonight.
Okay, I don't either, I'll wait till later tonight. All right, so, hearing none, I am going to officially adjourn this meeting.